Hello, everyone, and welcome to a special March 11th Planning Commission Committee of the Whole Meeting. The committee allows for a more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. I would like to ask for patience as we continue, given that we have virtual meetings, there may be a slight delay as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator. Before we begin, I do want to say thank you to everyone that was able to reschedule their time to be here today. We just want you to know that we appreciate the time and effort that you've taken. So, thank you very much. Okay, so today we have four discussion items on the agenda. There are some members of the public joining us, so we typically don't have timelines for speakers at this committee. I would like to ask everyone to be respectful of our time, and if you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. I would also ask that comments are not repetitive, and for the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any other comments. I would like each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Okay, so first, we have item one, and one which is rezoning Z2220, which is the East End Market PD. This item was first discussed by us on January 28th, and the applicant has made some changes to the request. And Ira Mayble will be presenting on behalf of staff.
All right. Good evening, everybody. All right, I think I should be sharing my screen. So this is a request for a planned development district. I did go through the full presentation for this request in the January committee of the whole meeting. So I'll be sticking today to just go over the changes that have been made to date between that time and today. So just as a recap, this request is for a little over 11 acres at the corner of Whittaker Mill Road and Wake Forest Road. Quite a number of zoning districts represented. And the request is for a PD, as I mentioned. Here's the aerial of the site, so a couple of existing commercial warehouse buildings present, and then other detached houses that front on Wake Forest Road. And then I've called out the other properties that were mentioned directly in the staff report. That's, pardon me, 1002 Mill Street, and then the other two sites, the townhouse site and the auto garage site. So the base district, so again, all planned development districts start with a base district, and then are allowed to modify elements of the UDO from there. So the base district for this request is CX, which has entitlement, and does include entitlement for all types of mixed-use residential office, retail, etc. So the first change here is a change to the height maximums. This is a picture of what I showed you last time, just as a baseline. So two seven-story maximum areas, a five-story air maximum area, and a 15-story maximum area. So the request now looks like this. They have had step down the height just by one story, just to the south of the townhouses on Cotton Exchange there. You might also have noticed that the first parking in track D, track E, those are the like other two central areas are a little bit different. So backing up one, this is the the site plan from last time, and this is the site plan this time. So a bit of a change to the building footprint also to accommodate cross-access, which I'll get into. This is the types of uses that are allowed in the different areas. This has not changed substantially. So the the commercial or non-residential, I should say, focused on the south and east there with more of the residential uses envisioned for the middle. There were already some prohibited uses and have added a couple more, adult establishment, car wash. And then they did prohibit a couple of uses, additional uses, so hotel, restaurant, bar, and manufacturing from track E. So going back, that is the all residential tract up here. So just to clarify, some uses that would not be from there, that would have been allowed previously. This is a summary of some other notable changes. So the blue plus signs are where there is now full vehicular cross-access. So in the top right there, going to the apartment development on Mill Street, that is a place where staff, there have been offer of pedestrian cross-access. And staff had suggested that full vehicular cross-access would better be supported by the comp plan and be a better improvement to the street grid overall in this area. So they have made that change to accommodate a full street. And then they have also offered cross-access to the townhouses and Cotton Exchange Court. The other blue plus in the middle there, track E. The two purple arrows are places with just pedestrian cross-access only. And then the green areas are where they have specified some planting, some transitioning yards where they had not before. So just how many trees per linear foot and fence or wall height, etc. So those are the big changes to the site plan. These are policies consistent with these comprehensive plan policies. These have not changed. So compact development, reducing vehicle trips, which comes into play because of the identity mixed-use development like this, consistent with reform. There were a handful of policies that I had called out in a previous staff report, most of them about connectivity. And so those couple of changes to cross-access, well, not every instance where staff, either myself or transportation staff, has called out where cross-access would be beneficial. Those were two pretty big ones that they added. So made those policies consistent now where they were inconsistent before. Still inconsistent with the feature lane use map. And these other policies about buffering and density transition and scale to commercial uses. So they have made some adjustments to transitions both to the north, to the rear side of the rear yards of the property on Mill Street, and also the Cotton Exchange Courts. So they have added some transition requirements there, but not to the auto garage on the corner, which had been suggested. So still some inconsistency here. You may have noticed too, the staff report still calls this incompatible with the surrounding area just because of the the scale of potential development really towards the two areas that are surrounded on all sides by this development. However, the, you know, when looking at the list of consistent policies and inconsistent policies, it did change the assessment to consistent with the plan overall, but inconsistent with the future land use map would still require an amendment. So recommending here change to community mixed-use to match that CX base district. So your deadline is in April, still quite a number of meetings between now and then. And the only the issue I'm raising here of note, mostly because I believe that an applicant can correct us, but through discussions with the applicant might be willing to make some adjustments to the way the development is treating that auto garage on the corner. But that is my presentation. Be happy to answer any clarifications before we go to the applicant.
You're muted, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you. I didn't see any. And I'd like to now go to the applicant to present.
Great. Thank you, Chair Winters. This is Michael Birch with Longley Floor Partners. And I just also want to reiterate and emphasize our thanks to both Planning Commission and staff for carving out time and holding this special meeting to hear this case. So thank you all for taking that time. So appreciate Ira's staff report updated that reflects our changes, update reflects the updated policy analysis, and the fact that we are now consistent with the comprehensive plan. Ira, if you could go to the next slide. So and maybe one more. As we're getting to the next slide, there we go. Thank you. So I do want to focus on the changes that were made since the last time we really discussed this, which was January 28th. We had made those changes in advance of the February 25th Committee of the Whole Meeting. We've also received some feedback from those changes, and I will update the committee today on some additional steps that we plan on taking, particularly with regard to transitions. I do, before I get into those details, I do just want to kind of start big picture one more time to kind of set the context for this master plan proposal. You'll see there in the middle of the screen, kind of the East End Market label, and just a reminder kind of where, how strategically located this property is. We are less than two miles to downtown, less than one mile to Midtown Exchange, just over two miles to North Hills, Midtown Exchange, North Hills East. This is along a key corridor of Wake Forest Road where the city is investing and planning for higher-frequency bus transit, enhanced bike and pedestrian infrastructure, additional greenway infrastructure, bike lanes. And we'll also say, kind of, we've all been discussing this lately as part of the equitable development around transit. You know, this site is still along the Transit Emphasis Corridor. It's proximate to the proposed frequent bus transit route and within kind of overlapping transit station area radiuses. And so again, and as kind of identified by the traffic impact analysis, this is an area with current vehicular transportation infrastructure that is sufficient to handle the proposed development. And so not only is it strategically located, it's also located in an area that can accommodate this type of development. So with that, also want to reiterate, if we can go to the next slide, that kind of what's unique about this planned development and kind of what brings some added value to the city is that what has been assembled is 17 separate parcels with over eight current property owners totaling 11 acres. And I just want to underscore the benefit of having this land assembled and planned and developed in a cohesive way so that it can be thoughtful and intentional about the mix of uses, the heights, the way that we're able to rehabilitate, renovate existing buildings, provide an internal and interconnected street system, actually create a place that hangs together as opposed to how much of the city develops, which is on a piece-built basis that may not feel cohesive. And so I just want to kind of underscore the importance of bringing this all at once, and so all this can be viewed at once. So we go to the next slide again. I did want to just remind the commission of some of the images. This is looking into the development north from Whittaker Mill Road with kind of the single-story low-level retail on the right-hand side, proposed office building there on the left side. Go one more slide. And this is a view of kind of the renovation of that existing warehouse that backs up to the railroad tracks, kind of turning it into some co-working office space and some restaurant uses to serve the residents and occupants of the development, but also located in a place that is walkable to the surrounding neighborhoods. And one more slide. And this is just a bird's eye view, kind of the southwest looking northeast, to give you a sense of the of the office building and then the other buildings that are planned. All right, can go to the next slide. So Ira mentioned the changes that we've made since the last Committee of the Whole Meeting. A lot of those changes resulted from conversations with staff in terms of uses and those types of things, but then also with owners, residents in the Cotton Exchange townhomes, as well as neighbors along Mill Street to our north. So if you go to the next slide. So this is just kind of a side-by-side comparison of the changes that we've made. But if we go to the next slide, I'll kind of focus first on the changes made around, you know, to the portion of the properties adjacent to the Cotton Exchange townhomes. Thank you. So what we heard both from owners, residents of Cotton Exchange, and staff and others is the desire for vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to the development itself, so that folks can access restaurants, retail, etc., without having to get out onto Wake Forest Road. We also heard kind of a concern about parking and people utilizing parking spaces within their development. And so with regard to that, we have provided a, first a gated pedestrian entrance kind of in the southeast corner there of the townhomes where they can, you know, there's kind of will be a break in the fence that they can utilize to walk to the development. Because we are proposing that privacy fence there within that 20-foot wide buffer area will also include plantings of shade trees, understory trees, shrubs. And then on the north side, we are proposing a gated vehicular point of ingress egress. So really, only the folks from Cotton Exchange would be able to get in and out of that access point there on the north. Another piece of feedback that we received from folks in Cotton Exchange was about the building height. First, I want to note that if you go back maybe one slide, you'll see that to the east of the Cotton Exchange, there was a portion of that deck-wrapped building that came out, you know, essentially to the east side of some of those townhomes, and that was a seven-story portion of the structure. We have removed that part of the building entirely. Also, on the south side, Cotton Exchange folks, we lowered the building height from seven stories to six stories. That change has been submitted to staff. I think based on some additional feedback that we received, there was a concern maybe still that six stories was still too high. And so what we propose to submit to the city is an additional reduction in height. So essentially, the building will appear as five stories on that north-facing elevation. Behind those, call it, was that six units there in Cotton Exchange closest to that building. So essentially, that north-facing elevation, that building will only appear as five stories. We are going to keep the designation at six stories because to the east of that on the south side of the building, it will appear as grade falls as an additional level. But we did want to make sure that the building, you know, kind of from that north elevation will be five stories in that portion of it. So again, just from a timing standpoint, we will be submitting that proposed change hopefully tomorrow. So if we go to the next slide, and again, I kind of touched on the landscaping and other transition additions in that area. So we go one more slide based on meeting after the January 28th Committee, the whole meeting. We've also, along our northern boundary, provided a opaque privacy fence, plantings. In response to a staff comment, we have realigned the cross-access to the Mills Street apartments and made it not just pedestrian, but also the point of vehicular access. And then in response to one of the neighbor requests, we have provided kind of a specific, you know, pedestrian access point from that person's backyard into the development. You can go to the next slide. Okay, let me have that. So
This is the last one, Michael.
Okay, great. Well, you'll kind of go back to more just as a side-by-side comparison. I'll kind of highlight again, highlight those changes made that were in advance of the February 25th meeting. Want to note again that we will further reduce the height of that building five on the south side of the Cotton Exchange townhomes. That will require us to increase the height of building six on the north side. But I believe that's kind of consistent with the comments that we received from Cotton Exchange folks that they were more comfortable with height on the north side than they were on the south side. Not speaking for them, but that was kind of the feedback that we heard, and so we have tried to address that, but the natural result of reducing a story on the south side is to add it back on the north side there on building six. I do want to note that we continue to try to propose some transition setback, step-back standards around the corner parcel there at Wake Forest Road and Whittaker Mill Road, the current auto repair center. That is still something that we are working on. We appreciate that the property owner continues to engage with us in conversation about that. We understand that that is kind of a key aspect both for that owner as well as staff, and I think we received some feedback from Planning Commission Committee the whole last time as well. So that is another aspect that we intend to address in our next submittal, whether that be on Friday or Monday. So that is in kind of an update of where we are. We have tried to be responsive both to staff comments, kind of change Mill Street neighbors and what we received from the Committee of the Whole at the last meeting. We do have a couple of team members that are on with us this afternoon who can help me address any questions that the committee may have. But we're just emphasizing again that this case is now consistent with the comprehensive plan. We think that with the additional change to height there on Cotton Exchange that were compatible, and we'll certainly use that spirit to continue to work with the auto repair center on finding something that's compatible there as well. So appreciate committee here in this case. Again, I will say, just from a process standpoint, I understand that y'all do have first another Committee of the Whole Meeting on March 25th, as well as a special meeting of the Planning Commission on March 30th. What we would ask respectfully is that, given that we do have some more changes that we would like to make, that if we can come back to the Committee of the Whole Meeting on the 25th, that would allow us to submit these changes by Monday and give staff the 10 days, you know, review prior to that Committee of the Whole Meeting. And then Committee of the Whole could refer out to the Planning Commission on the 30th, if that was acceptable. So just wanted to make that note.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any callers?
We do. We have four folks who have signed up to speak and who are on the call. I will start alphabetically by first name with Drew Chung. Andrew. Andrew, you are unmuted.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I want to thank committee for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew Chung, and I live in the Old Town Villages townhomes that will be blanketed on three sides by this development. Since the last meeting, we've had very little communication with the developers or the representatives. From the beginning, we have been open to hearing their ideas, how to be better neighbors and community members. We've heard them say that they want to include us in their discussions and listen to our feedback and concerns. But as of today, what changes have they really made to their plans? Reducing building five from seven stories to five? We said that we were amenable to the idea of increasing the height of building six. The height of building five was significantly reduced. It doesn't matter if they move the building 20 feet or 50 feet back. We'll be looking at our front doors, windows, and back porch just nothing but shadows and six to 15-story buildings. Adding shrubs and greenery to the buffer areas will be moot with the buildings completely smothering sunlight. We've been told that traffic will be, will only be impacted by mere seconds in certain areas. How are they going to explain that with the lack of parking they are offering? That traffic won't be an issue with cars searching for street parking. It's hard enough making left turn out of our development currently. How much worse will traffic be in the mornings and afternoons if their requests are granted? I'm all for growth for this area. I believe that developer could come in and make great use of the space. If a developer who says they want to work with the community, be part of it and prosper from this growth, would want to be better stewards of our neighborhood. Mr. Birch spoke about cohesion in regards to infrastructure. How thoughtful have they been in their impact to our community? Please put yourself in our shoes. We would be surrounded on three sides. Direct sunlight would be all but gone. Privacy would be gone. We've invested our hard-earned money in our properties. This is our home. We live here. We raise our kids here. I'm asking the committee to have the developers do the following: a sunlight study of our townhomes. Keep the zoning immediately to our south as OX-3-PCL with no rooftop pools or covering permitted. A more comprehensive impact study on traffic due to the limited parking. I thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chung. I, before we have our next guest, thank you, our next caller, just want to remind you to not be repetitive of what has already been spoken. So with that, can you please introduce the next call, please?
Happily. We have Beth Carmichael. Beth, you are unmuted.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for reconvening this meeting, and I know it was pretty inconvenient for everybody. So thanks for your flexibility in allowing us the opportunity to speak. I just, I want to first say that I appreciate Michael's comments earlier about the opportunity that this development provides to the city to assemble all of these divergent parcels into one thing for cohesive planning. But I do think it's important to remember that because our townhome community is situated right in the middle of this parcel, the cohesive plan that Michael is portraying is very limited, frankly. You know, we are always going to have to be taken into account. And I just really reiterate that, again, being surrounded on three sides provides us with many more challenges than probably any other petition you're going to see in the next 10 years. You know, I mean, we're profoundly impacted by this development. So the requests, when we're making these requests, I mean, we really do feel like we want to work with these folks. So the requests, when we're making these requests, I mean, we, we really do feel like we want to work with these folks, but we really feel like the things that we're bringing up are important to, 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 for them to honor. And, um, in particular, I think the most important thing for us is making sure that the, the height is, is lower on that, that. Section of building five and that there aren't any rooftop amenities, which I know that Andrew mentioned. But our request is to keep it to three stories, just, you know, and i- if they need to raise heights in other places that, you know, to, to make some of that up, that's, that's well and good. But considering the, the, the limit of twenty feet, which is just nothing, we're, you know, we're, we're going to be crowded so profoundly by what they're proposing. And then the other significant concern that we have is, um, you know, there's. There's a, going to be a good bit of noise because of all of the development. Um, and we're concerned that they haven't really put in any, any thought into, um, restricting the noise and things like smells. Like we would like to see something specific on their plan that addresses where trash receptacles are going to go. Um, and that, you know, that there's some, some, something to prevent like outdoor dining from being close to where we are so that we're not, you know, going to be affected by anything like that. So, I mean, they've got a few things in place that, that I think move us in the right direction, but. Given that our number one concern is around, you know, just privacy and sunlight, I think it's important that, um, you know, we have some limits on the, the stories of the, the height of the buildings and the. Just space, give us a little bit more, you know, privacy and space.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Carmichael. Can we please have our next caller?
Believe next we have Otis Lackey. Otis, you are unmuted.
Thanks, Matt. Can you hear me? Okay?
Sure can.
Okay, so let me start by sharing that I'm excited about this progress and the development of the plot. Uh, I do fully approve of rezoning to support a higher density than what we have today. Uh, but I don't support the current, uh, proposal that, uh, Michael shared, uh, earlier. So I own and live at, uh, eighteen ten Hilton Street. Uh, you can see this in the bottom left of the documents that Ira showed earlier, uh, so very close. Uh, and the main reason I wanted to speak today is I think you've heard a lot of good feedback from the folks in Cotton Exchange Townhomes and some from Mills Street. Uh, I want to remind you, uh, that there's a whole bunch of us that live to the west as well and that there are homes. All along that western face there in Wake Forest, while there is commercial development on the corners, that isn't representative of Wake Forest as a whole. Uh, and I'm afraid we've been forgotten in the kind of community engagement that the developer was talking about earlier. So I represent, uh, my family here at eighteen ten Hilton, uh, and eight other similarly located families, uh, that own homes here on Hilton Street. Uh, Kimbrough and Whittaker Mill and noted that in a, in a note that I sent to the commission back in February. So we have really two change requests we're looking for and then a concern, uh, similar to what Beth said a minute ago. Um, so the first is a- again, the scale. So, uh, it's not appropriate for a location bordering residential homes. Uh, we focused a lot on those buildings around the townhomes, but I remind you that that fifteen story building is three times what the, the current plan recommends for this area, which is four stories. That's up to fifteen. I, I understand going higher, uh, you know, moving these up to seven stories or however to match adjacent commercial development. Uh, but building a structure of more than twice the currently recommended height will have impacts, not just to my neighborhood, but I think much further. Than the small set of residents that are currently notified about this hearing. Uh, the second is, I would argue that there is in fact no transition of this planned development to the surrounding homes. It only seems like a transition in the context of a fifteen story tent pole on the corner of this lot. To then consider seven stories a step down and five stories a step down. The plan, the, the comprehensive plan that you all have put together, I think does a nice job of recognizing. That we need to negotiate these borders between this sort of commercial development and the surrounding neighborhoods. So there's a number of guidance elements within that. There's, uh, three to four story recommendation for those things next to homes. There's a comment about, uh, how heights should not exceed forty five degree planes starting ten feet from the lower density areas. Again, this plan development recognizes none of that. And I want to draw attention, I, we don't have the picture up, Ira, but to draw attention to that, that fifteen story building on the bottom left of their plan of the southwest corner. Is directly across from single family homes and, and mine back up to there. Uh, the other comment I want to make is I worry about this planned development as a precedent for Raleigh development overall. Uh, a comment that the development group made in our first community call rightly said that there is no comparable. Development like this in terms of proximity to homes in Raleigh today. So this sort of mass and scaling this close, uh, I, I think is ill advised. If, if we look at other examples around here, Iron Works, which they showed, it's capped out at seven stories. A village district, you know, a long term existing, uh, similar sort of retail mix, uh, has a single seven story building stepping down to five and three story. The only thing we have comparable here is the North Hills Plan Development. And in that case, they're tall structures, about four forty, about six forks. They step down to the outer reaches and the closest sort of analog we have there is the Saint Alvin Street, which is the northeast side. In that case, it's separated by a road, sidewalks, a fence and dedicated tree conservation area. Before we get into any sort of single family dwelling. And with each of these examples I've hit and that there's many others, I think these are sort of the closest I could come up with through this discussion. We see a balance of the need for much greater commercial development with Raleigh with respect for the neighborhood that it's being put in. And I just don't see the same reflection here. So that, that's it for my comments in terms of what we approve or, or not approve of the development. That the one other note that I'd like you all to take into account, and this echoes what Beth said is. We don't have a good sense of the lighting and screening they're planning. So that as this is developed, what sort of effect that will have on us surrounding residents regarding parking decks, uh, rooftop establishments outdoor. There's just a lot of sort of, I think, choices that need to be made in permitting to ensure that we can, uh. You do the kinds of protections we need for the homes around it. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Okay, maybe please, um, you can introduce our last caller.
Yep, uh, we have Robin Salibi. Robin, you are muted.
Thank you. Um, first want to thank this committee for getting together for the special meeting. Uh, we appreciate your time. Um, we are the owners of two thousand Wake Forest Road. It's been referenced in this meeting as the auto garage on the corner. Of, uh, Wake Forest Road and, uh, Whittaker Mill Road. In the neighborhood meeting, January sixth, I expressed my support of the development and the development team, um, so long as a couple reasonable, uh. Conditions were addressed. The building that's being proposed, um, at that corner encompasses both sides of our property. Um, the height that's being asked for approximately five times the current zoning maximum. And if not positioned in scale properly, the, properly, the effects of that building, that massive on both sides of our property could be catastrophic to us. And, uh, we have expressed two very reasonable concerns, uh, on numerous occasions that are in line, uh, with what I believe, um, the city and, and, uh. It sounds like they have, uh, at least Ira's initial comments today have been consistent with, and they're also consistent with the developer's current renderings and plans. And that is to have, um, in twenty five to thirty foot, no vertical build buffer between. The tower that they're planning on building and our property line. And also have, um, building height step backs, um, on the, uh, east side of our property is, uh. Where their rendering shows a very low, uh, density building that would be connected to the bigger building. Uh, that's where our, um, air and light, uh, majority of that would rise and, and set from. We're asking for a three story maximum on that east side and a seven story max on the south side. Which is behind our building and pushing the maximum density to the interior of the development. Again, all which seems to be in line with the renderings. Um, the, uh, obviously the fifteen stories that's being proposed, uh, would be extremely damaging to us if we don't have these conditions in place. Um, I have, uh, had contact on several occasions with, uh, Michael Birch, um, uh, the applicant. And, uh, he has given me, uh, very solid assurance that the, um, reasonable requests that we have will be, uh. Adequately addressed and inserted as conditions of zoning, um, uh, so long as those things are done, uh. And that building density is pushed to a safe part to not have a negative impact on our property, uh, we would be supportive of this development.
Okay, well, thank you. I just want to make a, just before we bring it back to the table, I want to make sure that no other caller has, uh, messaged you to speak. Matt?
Uh, no, uh, Chair Winters, that is everyone who, uh, is on the call that was signed up to speak.
Okay.
There are a few other folks on the call that have, were not signed up. And so if you would like to make comments, please message me and we'll get you. Unmuted. I, I believe that is it.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Okay, well then I will bring it, uh, back to the table, uh, for questions and comments from the commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Fox.
Has the applicant conducted a shadow study or would they be able to do so?
Hi, uh, Mr. Fox, Michael Birch, um, yes, we, we have, um. We will probably need to update it. I think we would want it to reflect kind of our. Current conditions, so to speak, with the lessened height on the south side and the removal of a portion of the building on the east side. Um, but yes, we have, and, and I think we can get that updated as well and, um, and share that.
Okay, Commissioner Rine.
On that note, um, I would request that they provide a minimum of four, um. Times of both equinoxes and both solstices, uh, for duration to get a good example of what happens throughout the year.
Uh, yes, sir. So I believe our, um, initial study had, um. Believe it was June twenty first, September twenty first, December twenty first, um, and then I imagine maybe like a March twenty first. Uh, at eight AM, twelve PM and four PM. Is that consistent with your, your request?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Chair Winters. Um, regarding the last caller, um, the request that, um, the auto garage owners had. Which they said they, um, had been assured were going to be met through conditions. My question is, do those requests conflict with the requests of the townhome owners or are they all consistent?
So Commissioner Bennett, this is Michael Burge. Um, I don't see a. Conflict, well, I don't see a conflict with what Mr. Salibi, um, is asking for. Uh, relative to what our current proposal is. Uh, as we said that we would amend it, you know, so with, with that building. Uh, five going down to kind of five stories facing cotton exchange. Um. I think what you heard from some kind of change folks was a request for something even lower. Um, the reason we've not been able to reengage since our last time is because it's taken this long to. Make these significant changes to lower the height, um, to the, kind of the max extent we can, uh, on that south side of the townhomes. So. Um, I, I really don't think that we can go any lower there. So I'm, I'm not sure from a conflict standpoint between what Mr. Salibi is asking for and what the kind of exchange folks are asking for. But I don't think there is a conflict between what Mr. Salibi is asking for and what we are proposing. But that. That addresses your question.
Okay, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Lempman.
This question is for the applicant. Um, can you provide just a detailed explanation as to, because I know we've, uh. Believe you had said among the pressures on parking, can you describe the parking choices? The number of stalls and why y- you have a lot of retail, residential, various components to this? Can you describe how you came to the thought process of the parking and the number of parking spaces?
Uh, ye- yes, ma'am. So first, let me say that. And I think this is consistent with. A lot of what the city has done recently with their parking regulations is that there is a recognition that. Um, the requirements of. The users, ultimate users, the underwriters or anything like this demand a certain. Amount of parking. And so the thought that something like this would be under parked is, um. I, I just, I don't think is. Is practical. I understand that the master plan includes. Uh. Parking ratios that are lower than what the code requires. That is in large part because we don't know the exact mix of what the uses are going to be. Uh, we don't know the exact mix of bedrooms for re- uh, residential or the type of office users or the restaurant users. But we are, you know, can, kind of in the current plan showing a seven level parking deck. It's essentially two seven level parking decks, which. Includes a significant number of parking spaces that are much more than what the ratio is in the. Master plan. So I can understand that if someone was just to look at the ratio and think that that is all that they are going to provide. You know, I can understand the concern there, but what will be provided, um, even without any minimum requirement. You know, will be sufficient. Um. And that is not even kind of taking into account the mix of uses and everything else, um, that kind of reduce the parking need. So I, I don't think that maybe that doesn't directly address your question of how did we get to that ratio, but. I think as the city continues to try to decrease its reliance. On the vehicle, yes, we still need to provide adequate parking in this kind of near to midterm, but at the same time. Not wanting to. Be held to a standard that doesn't make sense in the future as well. Um, particularly if, if the city continues to invest in transit the way that it is and. And all that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lemp.
Along those lines of parking, so the track D and the track C, that's not a hundred percent parking, is it? It's, you're going to have a component of parking within track D and track C.
Right, so within track D, you essentially have a, a deck wrapped building. So kind of that, the middle of that building is a multi-level parking deck. In track C, um, you also have structured parking. In the, call it track D and along, you know, in track A, you have. In the, call it track D, and along, you know, in track A, you have surface parking. Now, some of those buildings are going to rely on the deck parks. But yeah, all of that to say, there is a significant amount of parking planned for this development. It doesn't benefit anyone. The owner, the developer, any of the individual tenants to not have, much less the the surrounding neighbors, neighborhood. If there's not adequate parking, that's that's in everyone's interest to have.
Commissioner McIntosh, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Yes, I have a question for the applicant. So during the presentation, I think Mr. Birch mentioned equitable development around transit, and I'm wondering if that might be in relation to you all adding condition for affordable housing. I'm wondering what that was in reference to.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner McIntosh. So what that was referencing was the comprehensive plan amendments that were recently I guess it may still be at council, but I think they were recently adopted by council and certainly have gone through Planning Commission that updates the, in large part, the city's maps to reflect both the updated Wake County Transit Plan as well as the city's investment in bus rapid transit and other kind of transit infrastructure. So do you want to just directly address your question that, you know, this development does not include a requirement for capital A affordable housing. But we are providing you know, we have a max of five hundred dwelling units here. They are being provided in a couple of different just building construction types, which lends itself to different price points. And is being located, you know, in an area proximate to downtown that at least at the current time, most of the multifamily is, you know, north of Six Forks.
Yes, Commissioner.
Could I ask a follow-up question of the applicant? I guess my question is, do you know at this point what the lowest price point of um housing in this development might be?
Um I do not at this point. I think that's some information that we can get and bring back to you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, it seems as though a vote is not necessary because the applicant requested that we hold it until March twenty fifth. Um and what I'm hearing is that you'll be providing a shadow study. And you're going to also provide price points for Commissioner McIntosh. And then you'll also be providing us with a new um design that incorporates your conversations with Mr. Salvi. Is that correct?
Yes, that that is correct and um yes, we are fine from a timing standpoint to come back on March twenty fifth to the committee, the whole, so that hopefully will allow for some additional discussion if needed. I appreciate the comments and questions from the commissioners and community. This time I would just ask that if there are any other comments, questions from commission members. If we can either get this now or or feel free to send them to us after the meeting, but we are trying to do all that we can to kind of capture as much as we can in terms of changes in this in this next submittal.
Okay, I saw Commissioner Lempmann's hand first and then Commissioner McIntosh.
Mr. Birch, is there is there a covered bus stop along here or anywhere close?
So it as it exists today, I don't believe it is covered. Now, just from a UDO standpoint, and I think that the staff report notes this, that you know, the UDO requirements for transit infrastructure will be triggered by this level of intensity at the site plan stage. And so I think there's a level of comfort on everybody's part that there is a, there will be a requirement for a covered transit shelter.
Thank you.
Commissioner McIntosh.
Oh, I was just looking over my notes and the second caller, Beth, who's last time I did not get along with requests for more transitions and messing, which was repeated by several callers. She she specifically was asking about locations of dumpsters, which is something Vice Chair Winters is often concerned about on these plans. So I guess, you know, nuisance type um parts of the development, having those better defined was was requested as well.
Thank you for reiterating that. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. One of the callers commented, I think it was the caller in the community on Hilton west of the development or the rezoning commented that there hadn't been much engagement with that community. Is it possible, Mr. Birch, that you might reach out to them if you haven't already to try to incorporate their concerns and what you bring back to us?
Yes, we we can do that. Just to say, folks within that area did fall within both our neighborhood meetings in terms of the, they're both within five hundred feet and and one thousand feet. We, to be blunt, we we have just given the comments that we receive from folks spent and just our proximity have spent the most time with the kind of exchange in the middle street folks, but yes, we can also engage with Mr. Lackey and some of the other, you know, owners on Hilton, Kimbrough. And those streets there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, well, we are holding it at the table until March twenty fifth. Uh thank you so much, Mr. Birch.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have item A two, which is the comprehensive plan emerging issues report, which identifies the issue city council we want to consider for future comp plan amendments and legislative priorities. And again, we have Mr. Ira Maple.
Yeah, good evening. Hope you all don't get tired of me anytime soon. All right. Uh right, so um the comprehensive plan itself tells staff to publish a report on progress, including key accomplishments, critical issues, and key implementing agencies. Uh so this is something we've been doing since twenty ten, which is the year after the the complaint was adopted. With a bit of a hiatus during the big update push when we were actually working on the plan itself. But in any event, a regular practice for us, for most of you on the commission, probably the first time you've seen it. Just because since twenty fourteen it has been not included all the different pieces, which we'll get into as we go. But there's there's three pieces of standard content that go into the progress report. The first is just a recap of of all of the legislative actions taken by city council in the past year related to the comp plan. So all the zoning cases, text changes, and amendments to the plan itself are catalogued with a little bit of statistical information there. So we're not going to be talking about that. The the second piece is a is an anonymous amendment, which is actually I'm three on this agenda this evening, so I'm going to skip right to number three on this slide. Uh which is a section that we call emerging issues. These are trends in just the 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 city or the state or the country and the planning industry that we've identified as affecting the plan in one way or another. So some of those are are just reporting, so changes to state law, changes to city procedure. Really just describing things that are ongoing but don't really need action from anybody. There is another type of emerging issue, though, where we are sort of looking at either issues we've identified or issues we see coming coming down the pike that warrant some staff study and potential amendment to the plan. Um and so those items, in as much as they require a complaint amendment, require authorization from council. And then go through the standard procedure for conference of plan movement, which is planning commission review and public hearing. And so we've I've we've already presented the the report itself to council to be referred to. So what we're asking from you tonight, if you're comfortable, or the next time we discuss this, is a recommendation for councils to authorize us to work on those issues, and we welcome any suggestions or advice for how that would go, be reported to council to be included in their authorization. Um I do want to make one note, so the 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 progress report includes a section in this emerging issues section about an equity audit of the comprehensive plan. This is something that you all have talked about and asked for. Um I'm not going to talk about that tonight. That is moving on, moving along. So staff has been preparing a project charter, which is something we do for every significant project. We've been working pretty closely with the opposite equity inclusion, the the audit of the plan is part of their overall equity plan for the city. We're really right now trying to figure out what, if any, budget will have for this. Um we're anticipating a pretty high level of community engagement. So still firming up the scope of that. I mean, we are expecting, I think they should say kickoff in summer of twenty, so the start of the next fiscal year. We're hoping to have a kickoff for you know, a full look at the comprehensive plan for racial equity. So that is included in the progress report. I would say, you know, well worth a read if you haven't taken the time to read carefully. Um I think it'd give you a pretty good, pretty good example of where I think he is on this topic. But again, not really going to go into that because that is moving forward. And should be a pretty pretty significant piece of work in the coming year, we hope. So the three remaining issues that we're that we're looking for council to authorize us to work on are these three. One about the area-specific guidance or area plans or corridor plans. Some land use categories, some issues we've identified over over the course of implementing the plan, and then some housing policies. Because of other other actions that are that are ongoing. So number one, there are just under thirty, I think. Area-specific guidance, we call it, sections in the comp plan. Ignoring the one from nineteen eighty seven, which is the Swift Creek Plan, which is kind of unique. Well, no, it is definitely unique. It is enshrined in state law and probably won't change maybe ever. The rest of them, you know, the oldest one now predates the complaint itself by about ten years. So some of the some of the older ones in the in the early two thousands are now twenty years old. And so the issue we've identified is, there is currently no mechanism in the plan for reconsidering any of the of the small area plans that have been adopted, basically ever. Occasionally, they do happen. Either someone requests them or some other plan replaces them. So Cameron Village, Hillsborough Street replaced a couple of plans. There's some some precedent for a new area-specific guidance to replace an old one, but there isn't any formal policy for you know, how long do we wait before we we make sure that we're still, that the the policies and actions in those plans are still relevant? So we, I think the language we've used is, should there be a sunset period for these ASGs? And that would be after some number of years, we review, you know, we review the state of the plan. A couple of different ways, way that we described it so far, one example we can think of, we called it an opt-in. Which is after a certain a certain period the area-specific guidance after a certain number of years is just removed from the plan automatically unless city council takes affirmative action to keep it. The the opposite, it could also be the case, which is just after so many years, we trigger we we trigger a review of the area-specific guidance, but it stays in the plan unless council decides to remove it. And of course, there could also be just any any modification to to an area-specific guidance. It isn't just a keep or keep or keep or delete. Could be modified or updated. So we think this is a pretty simple change to the complaint itself. It would be a new policy in the implementation section describing this procedure. So how we would look at older area-specific guidance sections. And potentially, there there might be a change to the UDO in the chapter ten, which defines the review processes, but probably would just be a simple insertion of a new of a new policy in the implementation section. So somehow, if any question or how how exactly would that work, like I described a couple of different options that we that we think about. And how long should we be thinking before we revisit older plans? So you can keep that in mind as we go. The second emerging issue are for future land use map categories that we've identified as as being problematic in one way or another. The first is private open space. So this is land that's privately owned that the map designation says should just be open space. It is typically mapped on protective yards. And most of the time that is even referencing an old zoning district that no longer exists. So pre-UDO, this designation was mapped in a lot of a lot of areas that today would be covered under the transition yard standard for any mixed-use district. Also mapped on some some sensitive natural features, although most most really significant ones of those are in another open space category. Separate from this public public parks and open space. And then other uses like golf courses and cemeteries. Um so this is couple of issues with this we've identified. One is that it is kind of outdated, so the UDO has kind of leapfrogged the utility of this district. For most of the uses of this of this category. Um and the other thing is, it is pretty hard to tell a private property owner that they can't do anything on their property except to park. So this issue hasn't come up yet, but you know, enforcement seems difficult, to say the least. Uh so the recommendation from staff is to just remove this category from the plan and then map on a case-by-case basic, case-by-case basic, wherever basis, wherever it occurs, some alternative category. So as an example, this is a development in South Raleigh near Trenton Road. So right in the middle there, that apartment development under the modern density residential is surrounded by a golf course. So should this whole site redevelop? You know, the future land use map says the golf course should stay a core golf course or something similar. And there's all sorts of ways that this might redevelop with plenty of open space and all the appropriate protections on whatever streams there might be or whatever. And different land use configurations, you know. So not not really much of a public value in keeping private golf courses alive. The second category is so this is, I should say, too, all four of these are pretty mapped fairly limitedly in the comp plan. So wouldn't wouldn't change a significant portion. I didn't say residential is one of those, doesn't show up very often. But the description recommends a relatively tall building, so up to twelve stories. That does not include any commercial at all, so just an apartment building. It it does say, you know, ground floor retail could be could be considered, but in limited circumstances. On the other hand, you know, the the first really significant commercial mixed-use, so skipping RX. The the first really significant commercial mixed-use zoning district corresponds to the office and residential mixed-use category. And that's talking about even in a shorter building, so four to seven stories, so generally just like less development, but a mix of commercial and residential uses. So it is, you know, I think hard for us to imagine today, and a place where a building of the scale that would fit in the high-density residential category wouldn't accommodate some office component. wouldn't accommodate some office component. Just in general. Or, but once, once you're building a 12 story building, like why is apartment tower the only thing that should go there? So the, the recommendation here could be a couple of things. We either, we remove the category and replace with either office residence mixed use or potentially median density residential, depending on the, on the, on the case, that would probably count for most things or potentially another designation. So here's an example of that. There's, you know, Western Boulevard, that's NC State there on the right. So neighborhood mixed use, which doesn't really envision height. I'm remembering my land use category table above, above seven. And so a pocket of like tall apartment towers really as a transition to, I think, from a planning point of view, doesn't function as a much better transition as, as office towers would, would either or mixed use towers. And this is, this is pretty emblematic of high density residential. It is like cluster pockets like this here and there around the city. The fourth is office residential, office residential development. So this is describing the complaint as like a office parks. So it says residential would not be envisioned here. Discourages mixed use, which generally is, we're moving away from that. And a lot of, and a lot of our thinking in that policy encouraging more mixed use. This category sort of straddles the line between office and residential mixed use, which is basically the same thing, but says it's okay to have apartments or, or something else there. And then another category, business and commercial services, which is more and more intense, higher impact businesses would include, potentially include some industrial mixed use zoning, but also plenty of other commercial zoning. So really either one of those two categories could replace this one, depending on the context. And on its own is advocating for an office park. Like a traditional style office park with no residential component. Pretty different than where the rest of the policy in the city is headed. So here's an example of that kind of squeezed in between some community mixed use and some business and commercial services here. So in this case, potentially that lavender color could be expanded. Or this could be an, an office residential mixed use area. I would say the community mixed use here, you know, residential use would be compatible with that designation. Basically residential is compatible with everything on the screen here, except, except the dark blue in the middle and the purple. So not, not so much utility, we think in this district. And the fourth one is institutional. This one is, is pretty weird. It describes specifically the nature of the owner of the property as being an institution, which no other district does. The, the issue we see with this is when an institutional user sells their property and a new user comes in and wants to rezone. Basically they're by definition incompatible with their own future land use map, even if the uses is pretty comparable. So you know, a school being replaced with some other office building wouldn't fit this category because of the ownership. A couple of options we have identified to fix this could just amend the description of the district and say what happens in that case. So if a church sells a building, then you know, an office mixed use district would be appropriate here or something to that effect. Or similar to the other ones could be removed and replaced with office or business, commercial services or something else on a case by case basis. So here's an example, the institutional block in the middle is a church, I think. Going further north, Baileywood Road is another church and then the YMCA. So you know, the YMCA is not institutional, but a planet fitness or whatever, it's probably not. And it's just based on the, who's running the gym. So this institutional will be replaced with some other category comparable to what the actual use of the land is. Or again, describing what would happen if it was a non-church user. So this is the outcome of this, of this issue. We've done some analysis already of, of a lot of these. And I have started to think through what we would replace them with or, or how to modify the, the description. It would require probably a, a future lease up amendment on every property or many of the properties where these designations exist. Which according to the UDO was, would, would require mailed notice to all those property owners. So this would be a pretty time intensive and labor intensive change. But these are issues that we see crop up pretty, crop up pretty regularly across the city. And so you would be looking at, you know, a couple dozen potentially individual site flume changes for some of these, depending on, on how we're addressing these issues. For each of those four categories. Finally, the, the third issue is housing policy. So the council has authorized and even adopted quite a number of text changes to the UDO to address missing middle issues. There's one pretty big one in the works, TC 520, which should be hopefully in front of the text change committee in the next couple of weeks or months. That would permit duplexes and townhouses in a lot more districts. And would potentially entirely eliminate the units per acre measure in the UDO that we use now. That's among other text changes already adopted and other ones that have been either discussed or authorized. And you know, housing is regulated in the city. What hasn't changed are the policies in the comprehensive plan that are sort of the, the sister policies to the regulation, right? So you know, a current federal land use map designation that says, you know, our four districts should go here. Right now says there shouldn't be townhouses there because at the time, those, those two things were in line. But potentially there would be a lot more housing type referred to in our four. And so the category will describe a very different type of zoning that actually exists. And we'll be recommending something that is very different than, than the regulations we've been changing. So I, I must admit, this is a little bit, you know, the, the cart before the horse, the, we are moving forward with a changes to the regulation and we're trying, staff is trying to, to suggest we update the policies to match. And so I don't have really specific guidance on what this would look like. But we know it exists today and these two things are only going to drift further apart as more of these text changes are approved. So I think you know, authorization of this comprehensive plan amendment would, would be staff coming back with a proposal following the text changes. So make sure that we're, everything is consistent internally between policy and regulation. Council did give you a kind of a short turnaround for reviewing and getting your recommendation back to them. They 10th. There are a couple more meetings to discuss this. If you want to hold it to the next, to the whole meeting, you, that is an option. Or there is also the, the March 30th special meeting. But I think that would be the last, the last time you could act before April 10. Think I would like to pause here. That is my last slide. And be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioners at this point? Yes, Commissioner McIntosh.
I guess just, I, I just want to make sure I understand. So this is a proposal to look at these issues, but the, a lot of the answers to the questions will be determined in conversation. Once this is an official study, is that accurate?
Yep, these are all, we are hoping to initiate some comprehensive plan amendments. And so like every other time we do that, we would come to you first for review of the actual amendment, so the full staff report. And so if like we're changing, you know, the future land use map designation for some handful of properties or ten or dozens of properties, we would have a full analysis of all of those instances. I think so right, the, the, this is the staff would like authorization from council to do the, the full work that we, we do for every complaint amendment. I think what the opportunity here is if, and if any planning commission would like to make a recommendation that any of this is a bad idea or should be done, handled in a certain way. Or, you know, would like to make a recommendation for how we go about doing some of this work, changing the scope of what we think we would like to do. That's entirely appropriate. But you are right, the, the full change to the complaint would come back to you in the official, you know, mechanism that we do every complaint.
I saw Commissioner Melo.
Yeah, so I know we talked about, you know, kind of what this takes into consideration and some of the impacts that we've seen and the reasons for changing. What other aspects do you use in terms of guiding the future, you know, in the land use map? You know, some of the changes that are happening in Raleigh are substantial and not just based on, you know, current zoning conditions, but you know, I think that there's going to be, you know, even greater, we all know there's going to be greater need for absorbing the capacity of people that are coming in. So how do you use that? Do you use consultants? Do you use? How do you come about this? And just a general way to educate yourselves on the need?
So I think we were planning to do all of this in-house. And it's, it's different, I think, for the the three issues that I talked to, to talk through. So the area specific guidance in particular is really just giving us a, a timeframe to reevaluate our own planning. So theoretically, you know, if, if we say after 10 years or 15 years or whatever the number is, we need to look at an area plan that we've adopted. That could very well figure out some new public process like we did for the original plan in some degree. Or we would do some staff analysis to give council some idea of, of how, how much the policies have changed over to are still relevant over time. So that, that is more of a I think a way to check ourselves more than, than talk about should the plan change or not? I think for number three, I think that the question of need, the ship has already sailed to some degree. So council has authorized a lot of changes. And gone straight to the, straight to the code. And we, as in the, in the planning department are saying, we would like the actual policy that says what the code, what code should apply where to match what the code is. So that is, that is us catching up with the need that council's already said that they think there exists. The, the real question is the, the future land use map changes. I think. And I would say, you know, we've identified these four just as ones that come up every time there's a rezoning request in one of them. So I, you know, and maybe someone with a bit longer of institutional memory can remind me, but in my time here, I, I don't know if I've can remember rezoning in one of those four categories that hasn't that has fit precisely what the future land use map says should go there. There is very rarely a church that's buying another church or someone who wants private open space exclusively and not some other configuration. So the question would be what if those, those categories are different, what should be there instead? I don't think at this time we were talking, thinking about a pretty big public process to, to think about the need, as you're saying. These categories are pretty sparse throughout the city. I'm like, you know, some of the other residential categories or commercial categories that have pretty big acreages. They are often applied to smaller sites or individual lots. So I imagine a lot of the conversation will be with those landowners. Like I said, we would, we are changing the future land use map. We would have to mail them mail them notice a couple of times. And would probably be on a much smaller scale on a case by case basis. I think the other thing too, is the way we proposed it is these four categories have pretty reasonable replacement categories. I think that would serve a similar intent without some of the problems that have occurred over time. Did that answer your question?
Okay. Well, then I saw Commissioner Miller and then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I, I just had a clarification question. When I'm looking at the text changes that are coming down, I was trying to compare it to the UDO that's online and I noticed that the, that that version had not been updated in a while. So I'm having to compare the new text changes to TC 1919 to TC 1917 or 1719 or 1917, 1917 I guess it'd be. As opposed to the one online. So I was just wondering how frequently is the online UDO going to be updated based on our text changes?
I can answer that question. So that's been a struggle for us. We use a third party codifier. And they typically provide us with updates about four times a year. So oftentimes the text changes do lag behind. So if something is approved, let's say in December, oftentimes it's not put into the book until April of the next year at the earliest. So we're, we're currently exploring options for how we can get information in the book a little bit more quickly.
Great, thank you. And in the meantime, for some of these text changes coming down that are, that we know are amending aspects of the UDO that are not updated online. If, if there would be, if there's some way to clarify that for, I mean, because I, I can sort of piece it together, but it takes a while, but more trying to figure out how to let the public get involved and look at it. If there's a clean way to do that or just think about that, sure that the public will appreciate it.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. So Ira, just to clarify what you're seeking of us today is a recommendation to get this out of committee. So you can take this forward to council and then the process begins. Is that accurate?
Yes, it would be that you recommend we do all the work that I just described. I mean, I'm, I'm welcome to, if there are thoughts about how we should do any of it or go about any of it. And I think we would definitely appreciate that. With the understanding to miss McIntosh question, that there will be a lot more detail if these are authorized. A lot more detail in the future, but if anyone had some general guidance or thoughts or, we'd certainly be open to that. But yeah, it would be a recommendation that city council authorize us to do everything I just said.
Okay, Commissioner Fox?
I guess my general recommendation at this point would just be providing periodic updates in this forum.
I'm happy to jump in there. So if, if I understand Commissioner Fox, what you're asking is that staff come back and just provide regular status updates on our progress if this work is advanced to the city council.
Commissioner McIntosh?
I, yeah, I don't think this would change the way you're approaching this, but I am concerned about sunsetting area plans and making sure that the conversation about that includes affected areas that affected neighbors involved in those area plans. Or well, and maybe that's that might be kind of a high bar, actually I'm realizing, but I guess just the decisions aren't, you know, made without, the decisions are transparent and that there's consideration of the residents who are involved in those area plans.
Yes, ma'am. That's a, a great point. And if I could for a moment, you know, area plans are typically require a fair amount of energy expended by staff. are typically require a fair amount of energy expended by staff and by the public and by elected and appointed officials. It takes a long time to generate and to gain approval. The what staff has envisioned here is is not a system where if an area plan reaches a certain milestone or timeframe that it just expires or evaporates. So the intention behind an area plan is that it would be implemented over time, just like the action items within the comprehensive plan. So what staff would like to do is have a mechanism in place to reevaluate the area plans. And once they have either been fully implemented or have outlived their useful life, I have an ability to go back and and review that language.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Are there any other questions, concerns? Okay, well, would someone like to make a motion or can I move without objection? Okay, well, without objection, we will.
I was trying to find my mute button.
Is there a motion? Okay, so Commissioner McIntosh?
Okay. I move to approve comprehensive plan progress report emergent issues move forward for approval by city council to allow planning staff to work on this.
Is there a second? Commissioner Fox, a second? Thank you. Shanita, can you please do a roll call, please?
Yes, I apologize for the blur. I wanted to work by the window and we got glare. All righty. Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Lampman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Is Commissioner Ohaver on? No?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rains?
Aye.
And Chair Winters?
Aye.
Okay, well, that was unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Okay, again, it is the Ira Mabel Show with item three.
Get your money back.
BP five twenty, the omnibus comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, yeah, before I go, I will just say, Commissioner Fox, the point about getting updated. I think those those things will be multiple plan amendments. It's not going to be one big thing. So like, some of those are relatively small lift and might be back pretty shortly as just a full complaint amendment. I think the future land use map change is going to take us a number of months just to go through what we think the changes should be. So for those longer ones, we can definitely give you an update periodically about where we're at, for sure. But some might be, might be CP one twenty or two twenty or word up to pretty soon. Which, speaking of complaint amendments, the another part of the annual progress report is an omnibus amendment to the comprehensive plan. As described in one of those policies I showed earlier telling staff how we should keep the plan fresh and updated. This is a pretty much a a housekeeping exercise for us. It is toward monitoring documentation. It is only recommending changes to action items only. So we're not changing any any policy statements in the plan with the omnibus amendment. And there's a couple of things we do to these actions. The first is is reflecting our internal organization. So the plan still has the planning department and development services, the two different departments. So we would combine those. The also showing off the transportation planning and Department of Transportation as separate. This dates back to when transportation planning was a part of planning, which it has not been for some years. So finally cleaning that up, the opposite of that inclusion does not exist in the plan today because it is new. The city manager's office has very politely reminded me that they they are support. They don't lead the actions. They support all the other departments. So there are there are some actions that are listed as the city manager's office is leading. And so we're proposing to replace all that with with another department. But for the actions themselves, there's four things we do or four reasons we change an action. Twenty-five, we're considering as completed. So the city has done them. Eight, we're removing. So basically saying we're not going to do those eight anymore. Eight, we are changing from an action to a policy. So an action theoretically should have an end date and be fairly specific. And a policy is more of an ongoing position of the city that never ends. So some of those were converting. And then there's, you know, thirty-six that we're changing in some other way, which I can explain. So I do want to take a moment here to say, this is the time when you know, this, it does get buried in a pretty boring omnibus amendment. The actions that are completed represent some pretty exciting and significant achievements. Most of which outside of our department. So all of our friends in all of our other departments do some really great work around the city. So we adopted the Dix Park Master Plan. There was an action that said we should do that. We now have like share. There was an action that said we should have one of those. The bioenergy plant at the New River Resource Recovery Facility is well underway. So some of the some of those actions are are done. You know, other things that that said we should change the U D O in some way and have done that. So I do want to take a moment to say that this is reflecting of of a lot of work around the city for many years, sometimes pretty big projects. And then it does sort of end in a whimper in in my little omnibus amendment. But pretty good. Happy to happy to do that. There are some actions that so completed means the city did the work. Like check the box, we're done with this action. There are some actions where we're saying we're we haven't done the work, but we're not going to do the work. And those are a couple of different reasons. Sometimes the the policy has changed. So like EP two point two describes how the Parks Department should acquire property and they have changed their model of how they do that. So they look at land now from a like a service base, which is not what this action says. So effectively parks are saying like, we don't do, we're not going to do it this the way this action does it anymore because we have some other procedure in place. So technically not an achievement, but no longer really relevant for how we do business. There are some that just over time, you know, have become infeasible or we've started to investigate them and decided that it's not really actionable. So there's some examples there, EP seven point six demolition debris. I think there's some state law now that we're our local ordinance or local ordinances are in line with state law. So we're not going to do quite what the action says we're going to do. Sometimes it's some other change that happens outside of of the city Raleigh's control. So RC four point five says that we should be working with Wake County Public Schools to have more online learning. And the IT department, whose action that was told me that they're they don't, the Wake County doesn't need us anymore for that. So they're not going to work on that action. Actions that are being converted to a policy, there are a couple of reasons that happens. So one is, you know, we've done the action, but there's some sort of recurring action that we're going to do in perpetuity over time. So whereas the action might say, you know, collect data about transportation, will instead say, you know, continue to do this now that we have collected that data. So I would say too that every every one of these actions that are converting has a has a attached policy that we're saying is going to replace the action. So similarly, we completed and and have ongoing upkeep of some program. So parks, the PR three point thirteen says this program which they have done. And so they work with the school system to do that annually. So the policy just basically says to keep doing that rather than to start a new program. And then there are some that are telling us to coordinate with other agencies that we think would fit better with the policy, which is a little bit more opportunistic. So like Wake County right now is doing some of their own planning. It's we would partner when those opportunities occur rather than have an act that has a specific date. Just because it relies on some other outside party. And then finally, we amend an action. So an action has multiple parts. There's the title and the description. But then the people responsible for it, the timeframe and whether or not needs capital funds and the type of action, it's really mostly changes to responsible agencies and the timeframe. So a lot of these are, you know, someone will tell me, well, this is really someone else's job. Make me number two and make that a number one or whatever. Or adjusting how long we think that thing will then is going to take. Sometimes an action is changed because the a process or or term it uses is out of date. So for example, this action telling us to do public facility energy audits, which the Office of Sustainability tells me don't really do anymore and would just like some more generic wording in their action. Sometimes it's just the thinking has changed on an action. So this is was talking about financial assistance. I specifically said downtown. I think this is probably also could be closely related as we've seen a lot of loans needed everywhere in the city. So the the change to in this case, reduce the specificity, give us some more flexibility for how we how we do this. Sometimes it is a change in will approach what we say we're going to do. So this action is telling us to create a database of private open space. I think we've internally as staff decided probably infeasible to happen the way it's described and would instead look to change how we collect site plans to start to build that data over time. So still would like to have this, but a bit of a reality check for how it would work. Oh, and that's the end of my presentation. Great. So so I do want to reiterate this. So your deadline for this is the same as the other one. Council referred both of these things to you at the same time. And this is we in in our view, like I said, pretty clerical and housekeeping in nature. And trying to keep all the actions. You know, and the people accountable for the actions representing the most most recent version of the other work that they do and being sort of realistic with what what we're asking them to do. Be happy to take any questions.
Are there questions, commissioners? Okay. Is there a motion?
Yep, so similar, just I'm sorry. Would be asking if you recommend that council approve this comprehensive plan amendment? Sorry.
Commissioner McIntosh?
I move to recommend council approve CP five twenty omnibus comprehensive plan amendment.
Is there a second? I saw Commissioner Bennett?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moving properly seconded. Miss Shanita, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner Lampman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Rains?
Aye.
And Chair Winters?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It was unanimous. And moving on to our last item, the equity analysis for rezoning staff reports.
Hi there, this is John. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was Ira again. Please forgive me.
Yep, this is John Anegast and I'll be presenting this item. And so this is a proposal that this staff in the planning and development department have have come up with for thinking more about equity in the analysis that's contained in the rezoning staff report. And so this idea has kind of emerged from a series of events, of course, over the the past year. There were some pretty high visibility protests throughout the country. And, you know, those are rooted in a long history of discrimination and injustice in the United States of America. And more recently, you know, here in the city of Raleigh, the city council and you, the planning commission have voiced some interest in bringing equity considerations more to the forefront, particularly in our comprehensive plan in our rezoning process. And so while we do have a process in development to update the comprehensive plan to incorporate more policies reflecting equity considerations. In the meantime, we can think about how the rezoning staff report can start to do that before that that other process is complete. And so to do that, we have to start with what do we mean by equity? Because there are a lot of ways that people think about equity. So here are some of the the basic tenants that we we look, we that we started with before we started thinking about how do we actually construct a section of a rezoning staff report? And I'll let you read these. I'm not going to read these off one by one. But essentially, the way that we were approaching equity is that equality of opportunity has to be available to everyone or should be available to everyone as much as possible. And that to reach equality of opportunity, you have to think about where someone is starting from. And everyone is not starting from the same place. And that goes back to again, history. And that we have to account for what came before us because those things are still with us today. So for Raleigh, that history is very much the history of the United States and particularly the southeastern part of the United States in that Raleigh's history does include slavery, the enslavement of black people. And so, you know, that again, the history of that and and the Jim Crow discrimination that occurred after emancipation still reverberates in Raleigh today. And then, of course, even if we change the laws as happened in in the nineteen sixties with many, many of the acts that were enacted then, the institutional aspects of discrimination, the systemic aspects of discrimination in our society don't just vanish because at the stroke of a pen, we on paper said that things are now going to be equal. So we have to have that lens. And so from that lens, what what do we have to think about when it comes to rezoning? Because rezoning is a very specific activity in our society, in our community. Well, in Raleigh, the way that we see the reverberations of discrimination and injustice today is the life outcomes of people of color, black and indigenous people and people of color versus the life and economic outcomes of white people. And what the data show is that, you know, statistically speaking, if you compare a typical black resident of Raleigh to a typical white resident of Raleigh, what you're going to find is that a black resident is going to have a lower level of economic opportunity and likely life and health outcomes. And that is, we can draw a straight line from historic injustice to those outcomes today. It's 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 pretty easy. So the other aspect is that our economic structure is changing. And that's that's partially has to do with historic injustice, but also has to do with modern globalization, technology, there are other factors, but the the key thing there is that when you have an existing state of of inequity and disadvantage that is centered on a particular group of people, any changes in our economy that create new disadvantages are disproportionately going to affect those people who are starting from a disadvantaged position. any changes in our economy that create new disadvantages are disproportionately going to affect those people who are starting from a disadvantaged position. So with those things in mind, I need to think, well, okay, well, how how would we respond to those things that we now are recognizing and want to address? How do we respond to them? And so the Government Alliance for Race and Equity is an organization that the city is working with to provide training for our staff and also guidance for how to pursue these types of processes. And so they do have a framework, a toolkit, they call it, that asks us several questions that that can be applied to any number of different processes or initiatives. And they're listed here and you know, asking questions like who is experiencing a burden or a benefit from a particular decision or program? And so we we started with those questions as a basis for the rezoning staff report section. But what we thought was, you know, we can't, those questions are difficult to ask directly about rezoning. We we don't really know that we can commit to answering those questions consistently and fairly for every rezoning case, considering the amount of time that we have to review a rezoning case. And so it's not appropriate or responsible to claim that we are going to answer those questions extensively. And so we we kind of adapted those ideas to something that we thought we could apply consistently. And so the way that that works is really not trying to specifically say, is this rezoning decision creating a burden or a benefit? Can't we ascribe a a clear equity impact from a rezoning decision? But what is the background information that we need to have in hand so we can start to have that conversation? Because staff is is not really in a position to be answering that question. That's kind of a community question that needs to be part of the public review process at Planning Commission and City Council. And so the the section that we've developed is really just trying to add information to help you with that conversation. And so some of the information that's in the rezoning equity section is is information that's already in the staff report. You know, the housing diversity, the climate impact information that you see today. And then we brought in some new information. And so we have two data points from the Department of Housing and Urban Development from the federal government having to do with, you know, what is the likely cost of transportation for a household based on the available multimodal options and the destinations that are nearby? And then also, are there, what what is the the amount of employment opportunities that are accessible to a particular area? And then we we adapted a displacement risk index that was developed by the city of Portland that tries to ask the question, what is the level of vulnerability for existing residents of an area to significant or sudden changes in housing prices or costs? And so that is drawing on the level of poverty, the level of educational attainment. And then it does have a racial, a racial component, because when we're thinking about displacement and equity, of course, there there it's important to make sure that we're being attentive to the fact that other factors beyond the cost of housing have led to displacement for communities of color historically. And so there does seem to be, you know, communities of color are particularly at risk or have been in many cities in the United States. And then environmental and historic factors. So we'll talk about those a little bit here. And so the displacement risk index I just talked about a little bit. One thing I do want to note about that is that it does not, it is very quantitative. So it doesn't capture things like, are there forms of cultural displacement that are taking place in a community? And so those can be things like if if the historical population of a neighborhood is moving away, that can lead to institutions in that neighborhood being undermined or losing support, things like churches and civic organizations, academic institutions. Those things are as much a part of a a history and a culture of a neighborhood as the people in the homes that are there. And those things are more difficult to measure. So that's something that's that doesn't get captured by this index, but we think it's useful. And then thinking about in the history of Raleigh, when when an area was initially being developed, what was the context from a racial equity perspective? In the sense of was slavery legal at that time? Was it during the period of Jim Crow? Was it a a time when black and indigenous and people of color were not able to equally pursue economic opportunity and political opportunity in Raleigh? And a thing to note about that section is it is very difficult to produce that information exhaustively and consistently for each zoning case in in the month or so of time that staff has to actually review a rezoning case before it appears at the planning commission. And so that's something we are a little bit apprehensive about that, you know, it may be that a case that it just isn't readily available information. But potentially, there is a history of of inequity relevant to an area of the city. We're just not able to gather that information. And so that's something that, you know, we have to be careful that we don't want to be treating different parts of the city unequally due to a lack of information. We did consider some other features that we could have included in this section that we ultimately decided not to include. Certain environmental aspects that are again, difficult to difficult to describe particular effects or impacts from. So if there's a highway nearby that may impact air quality, you know, that can we really consistently say that that's a direct impact? And then other things that we felt like we're kind of repeating the the same other, repeating other things that were already measured. So those things, you know, we don't want to be just repeating all the same metrics in different forms, because that can end up being too much information to the extent that it starts to distract from what's the goal of the information. And then we have a set of questions that are really more prompts for conversation. They are not meant to be conclusive statements about what the impact of the rezoning is. It's more meant to generate conversation based on background information that's provided. And and so that's really the goal of those those four questions at the end of the session. So I've gone gone into some of these notes as I've gone through the presentation in the sense that, you know, we want to be careful about what we're committing to to analyzing with these staff reports and that it's not responsible to commit to something if if we're not able to do it consistently. So we've we've tried to be careful about that. The other factor is rezoning is not the end of the story. Rezoning is one factor in many factors that affect equity and economic opportunity in our society. Other factor, other things that we have to be careful about is that each zoning district has a number of different development options, some of which could arguably contribute to equity, others of which may arguably not contribute to equity. And so it's hard to say definitively this zoning decision has a positive or negative, maybe a mix. So that again, goes back to how why we're not trying to make conclusive statements about whether a case is advancing equity or not. We're trying to provide additional information. And so that I I'd be happy to take your questions. And you know, that this item today, it's it's kind of open ended. You know, we'd like to hear from you about how you think this could be used.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anagnost. Are there any questions? Okay, I saw Commissioner Fox.
John, rather than take the approach of using the GARE information, which is great, but but not directly applicable to land use considerations. Did you look at the standard EJ screen, like environmental justice screen that's done for federal projects as a as a model that you might use?
We did not look at that.
So I might, I might recommend it and I it's a, it's a publicly available tool. And what you're able to look at on there are things like high English as a second language, population, high population greater than sixty five and under five, transit dependent population and location of environmental hazards. So among many, many other things. But it's used, it's used specifically in federal and state funding. So you might, it it's, it's an easy tool to use is what I'm saying. So in that sense, applicants can be looking at it as well. So that my, just one, one thought on on my approach.
Yeah, we could take a look at that.
Okay. Vanessa, Commissioner Ryan.
Well, just one clarification and then follow up question. So John, this isn't advocating for any changes in land use policies. It's just providing data for people to discuss. Just to clarify that and then so if that's the case, and we really can't monitor any impacts or measure any, any implications that may come about from from these discussions. So it's not really a question. I guess I'm just throwing that out there. That's this is something that we can't really measure or monitor.
Yeah, I mean, that that's kind of the when we're talking about at the beginning of the presentation that we are developing an update to the comprehensive plan to have specific policies that would say, what is equity? How are we measuring equity from a land use or infrastructure perspective or service provision perspective? Then that we could then at that point start to in a sense, monitor if we are improving equity, given though equity is is nebulous in a sense. I mean, there's different definitions, but yeah, I think that that at least having that level of policy detail in the conference of plan would give us more ability to do that. And so in the meantime, this is sort of another option to at least start the conversation, even if we don't have specific prescriptions.
Okay, I thought I saw Commissioner McIntosh and then Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Anagnost for your presentation. I have a, just I'm curious. I thought I read somewhere there was a discussion around this and I'm not finding it now, but on the table in in the memo, there's a, I'm sorry, I'm not identifying this and there's not a title to tell you what I'm looking at. But the the metric of change in median two bedroom rent since 2015 to show a percentage change. I thought I saw that there had been a conversation about like what date in the calendar to go back to. I was wondering, you know, this is only going back, you know, five years. Is there a reason you're not going back further? I I was, I was thinking like, I can think of some neighborhoods where, for example, there's been gentrification going on for, you know, close to a decade and wasn't sure that would be visible just going back five years.
We did want to go back further. And what we found when we tested this on a few different rezoning cases is that the census data was inconsistent for that particular metric. Some places it did go back to closer to 2010, but the the farthest back we could consistently find was generally about 2015. And so again, we do want to make sure that we're able to provide similar information across zoning cases.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Actually, I'm okay. My question was answered.
Okay, I see Commissioner Lampman.
Yeah, um, one is to Commissioner Fox, but maybe in a second, just the whatever that link was that you talked about for the environmental justice. I hadn't seen that one. And just as a clarification, you had a couple of examples that were provided in the in board docs. And are those examples what we should anticipate seeing or are you going to be narrowing this down or what? What are those examples exactly for us?
So there's two basic purposes of those examples. One is to see the type of data that we're talking about, although as is noted in the memo, there are a couple of data points that we ended up removing because of the the concern about being able to provide them consistently and or their relevance. So but that, you know, largely to just show you what would the section look like? What could you expect to see in a staff report? And then the second purpose is to also for you to see how we are framing the thinking around that information. So what would be the analysis that we would draw from it? What is the depth? What is the level of causal relationship that we would be putting forth in relation to that information? Because, you know, as as I've noted a couple of times in the presentation, we're really not, staff is not trying to definitively state this rezoning decision definitely will hurt or benefit equity. We just don't feel qualified based on this information to be making statements like that. So just to give you a sense of what statements would we be making about that information?
And then is this going to be incorporated into the package or is this going to be a separate like addendum to all of the rezonings?
It would probably take the place of the housing diversity and climate impact section that's that's currently in the staff report. So the one that talks about, you know, does it allow a variety of housing types? Is it near trend? What's the walk score? What's the transit score? And so you can see it's kind of been already merged with that section. And so basically just take that section's place.
Okay, I saw Commissioner McIntosh and Commissioner Miller.
Okay, yeah, and this was just on the, just a question on the example you gave us, Z thirty two twenty falls the news case where you applied these tools on the table displacement risk profile where you're referencing the census tract. Parcels, I I was just wondering if there's a way to link to a map of that if that, because I, it's really helpful for us to have iMaps and Google link in these reports. I didn't know if the census tract is something we could easily look at or if that's more of a subscription that you all have access to.
So the way that we have treated that, if you look at the template that's attached to the memo, we have a map inserted into the section that shows the tracks with with the numbers labeled. So I think that's how we'd like to do it. We, you know, we're open to suggestions. And then if you use iMaps, the Wake County property tool, that has both census tracks and block and so you can, you can also use that if you want to just, you know, have a dynamic version and move around and zoom in and stuff.
Okay, great. Yeah, it sounds like you have it covered. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
When I'm looking at the example on the displacement risk profile, I see that you talk about percentage of the population that is black or Hispanic. Did you consider any other including information regarding any other races or ethnicities like Middle Eastern or Asian American?
I think we probably will end up because we have created a mapping, an online map to help us, thanks to our GIS supervisor Ray, who created a really helpful map for us that basically produces all that information at the click of a button, super handy. And so, yeah, the way he's constructed that, and I think if if we go ahead with this, we'll use that is that it's it's basically compiled of basically any racial or ethnic group other than white, non Hispanic. And I think that's how the federal EJ screen also does it. And so that would include Asian Americans or Pacific Islanders. It, in terms of Middle Eastern, that is not a category that's been included in the census until this most recent census. And so that really wouldn't be, I guess, once the 2020 numbers come out, I guess we would have that. So we, yeah, we could potentially incorporate that.
And maybe just also including population percentage white might be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically, so once it's converted, you know, once it, if we use the metric of white, non Hispanic, that is basically, or not white, non Hispanic. It's basically, you you're creating an inverse, like you're splitting the population into two components that are that are complements of, they add up to a hundred percent. And so it would be, yeah, white would be one and then all other non, not white, non Hispanic would be another.
Very helpful. Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. First, let me thank you, John and staff, for putting this together. You know, I'm really excited about this, so I'm glad to see it. A couple of things, I want to underscore Commissioner Fox's suggestion about EJ screen. It's really helpful. I've used it extensively, and EPA recommends it a lot when you're doing environmental justice analysis and other types of equity assessments like that. And it is really easy to use. And I like the idea that not only would staff be looking at it, but applicants could look at it as well. So they could be, they could see, you know, the impact of what they're doing, particularly as it relates to, you know, hazardous materials or hazardous facilities. You can see where those are located in relation to your rezoning. The other thing is, I hope, my hope is that I appreciate that this is difficult, and it's hard to make definitive statements about equity, especially as it relates to a specific rezoning. That's hard, I get it. I'm hoping that with the equity audit and the various changes that are coming to the comprehensive plan, we'll see policy changes related to equity. So it'll be easier for the planning commission to determine if a particular rezoning is consistent with the policy. And we won't necessarily have to jump through so many hoops through the analysis that you're doing, because we can tie it back to a policy, much like we do now, to try to determine consistency. And I guess the last thing was related to, I think you said a few times that, you know, you would be uncomfortable making definitive statements because, you know, you don't feel qualified to make a statement if something is equitable or how it's impacting equity. And so I would just say, you know, something that we've talked about over our last couple of meetings is we make statements about consistency that are fairly subjective. So I don't really see a problem. First of all, I'm not asking you all to tell us if it's equitable or not. I'm asking you to just give us the information that we can have the conversation, much like you're saying. And then we can say, well, we think this is consistent, or, you know, this is inconsistent. But I don't think you should necessarily sell yourself short. Because, you know, as planners, we are trained to look at equity and what is equitable and what is not equitable. And I think just like we are able to look at these rezonings and determine if it's consistent or inconsistent with various land use policies, I think we can look at the rezoning and determine if it's consistent or inconsistent with equity policies related to equity. I think that's part of our charge, I think, as planners. So I think the information that you have provided is a really, really good start. I mean, we can continue to talk about it and refine it and streamline it or whatever, so you're not doing an extensive amount of work just for this topic. But I think this is exactly what planning is. And I'm actually excited about the opportunity to be able to have these discussions in a way that everybody has access to the information. So the applicant sees it, the public sees it, and we can have these conversations about how we think a particular rezoning, you know, affects equity, whether it's racial equity or geographic equity, or, you know, whatever. So I guess the bottom line is, don't sell yourself short as a planner, because I think this is exactly what we are trained to talk about. So, and thank you again for your hard work and your effort with this.
Thank you. And I think we will be more prepared for that policy analysis, also because there's going to be GARE-based training for all city staff coming soon. And so I think that part of it is, you know, planners do get trained in those types of topics. But we also need to have an established policy framework that is, you know, adopted by the city itself, so we're all on the same page. And so we can point back to a common understanding of the topic and say, you know, I'm not just, like you said, it is somewhat subjective, but it's subjective based on a mutually agreed upon framework that's established in advance. And so we will feel better once we have that. I agree, we should do what we can now.
Thanks, I agree.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Ray?
Are there any resources of precedence from other cities that have done something similar to this already? I know you mentioned Portland, but I don't know if you have any, in your research, any examples that you could point us in the right direction to take a look at?
We didn't find any that were specific to the rezoning process. There are, you know, a lot of cities are doing this type of analysis for larger scale processes, you know, area planning or infrastructure projects, where you have more time, you have months or a year or two to build that into a process and also have, you know, public engagement into it. So, yeah, we didn't see any that were at this scale.
Right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so just going to border, do I need to, this needs to be voted out or is this a conversation, this is not going to be a conversation?
This is just a discussion item.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, let me also add to this, Mr. Ananost, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, I'm a little tongue-tied right now. Thank you and to staff for all of your hard work, and especially thank you for this presentation. I know that, I understand and I appreciate that it could be a difficult topic to present. So I just wanted to say thank you for how you came and presented today. So thank you to everyone, and also as a commission on a whole, I'm very proud of the work that we've been doing with this topic as it relates to equity and as we're looking at Raleigh moving forward. And I would also like to say a special thank you to Commissioner Bennett. She will probably blush and be shy, but I distinctly remember our commission meeting in May, it was after the George Floyd incident, and we were about to experience Raleigh in a different way. And it was her beautiful and eloquent words that helped shape this conversation for us and how we have moved forward. So I just wanted to say a special thank you to her for that and to us for carrying that torch forward. Okay, well, that is the end of our agenda. If there are any other questions, comments, or concerns, we will be adjourned. All right, thank you, everybody.